Hi, I'm Jaworski. July 10th, 2018 Selectmen's meeting. Select Board meeting at 5:30. What we're going to do tonight is first, we're going to go into executive session and then come back. After executive session, have a regular meeting, and then we'll be meeting with the Finance Board for end of the year financial transfers. So, the charity declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. This will be a voice vote by all three. I make a motion to go into executive session under Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Number 6. Jaworski says aye.
Moriarty, aye?
Do, aye.
Before we, but, and I think we need to have part of the motion to return to public session after the executive session ends.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So, I'll make a motion to come back into regular session after executive session. Jaworski says aye.
Moriarty, aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're back. We're ready to proceed with our regular meeting, and then we'll be meeting with the Finance Committee. Start with announcements. Do we have any announcements?
No, I don't.
Nope, I have none.
Phil have? There something on Chapter 90 funding you wanted to announce?
I mean, I can speak for it on our announcements. So, we just filed all the paperwork for Chapter 90. So, the projects this year will be the Pantry Road project. We're going to do a full reclamation, and Mountain Road will be included going up the hill to just the paved part. We'll be milling that and paving that as well. I don't expect anything to happen till like the fall for that because Warner Brothers, who has a low contract, is so busy on 91. And then the crack ceiling would be doing Scotland Road, Woodbridge, Gore Avenue, Lindsay Road, Depot Road, and Upper Main Street with crack ceiling. And that's all under Chapter 90.
And the steps update is?
They should be pouring the concrete walk this week. I met with the railing fabricator today. He's going to make the template up and come back maybe at the end of the week, and then he'll start fabrication, and that's it. It's done.
Okay.
Looks good.
Thank you. Anybody here for public forum? Okay, we're going to move to approval of the minutes for May 1st, 2018.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of May 1st, 2018?
We have a motion. I'll second that motion.
I wasn't here for that one, so I'll just abstain because I wasn't here for those.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so be it.
Make a motion and accept the minutes of June 15th, 2018.
I'll second that motion.
I had some questions on that one. I spoke to the town administrator with earlier. Marlene, do you want me to say it now or just wait for Charlie up to you?
Yeah, if it's okay, we will hold off on that one.
Okay, we'll hold off on June 15th.
Just a couple of the comment, yeah, wording in there a little bit.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of June 27th, 2018.
Second June 27th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Actually, I'm going to take the topics out of order. I'm going to go with Topic 6 first because I think Topic 2 hinges on Topic 6. And this is the Town Hall update renovation, and all I got to say is right now Houston, we have a problem. The renovation project bids came in over $371,000. What's occurred is a lot of the sub-bidders were extremely high. The general bids were pretty much close. So, right now with the architect, we met with the architect, with DPW Director, with Town Administrator, and we discussed some strategies. They're going to go back and revisit some of the items for the Town Hall renovations, and what we, what they're going to do is hope to rebid for September if after we visit some of those items. So, some of the items that they're going to be looking at is COA wanted a secondary ramp to go down. They're going to look if it's possible to put that secondary ramp in the back where there'll be less excavation, and it might be cheaper, and people now don't have to go all the way back. They're going to look at the kitchen right now. The kitchen, if they renovate the kitchen, it would have to be a commercial kitchen, and presently what COA has is it has a steaming table. The food's all brought in during the week. The intent was that they could use the kitchen. It'd have to be a commercial kitchen. So, they're also going to try to rebid it, and I guess if the bids come in high again, then I guess the bad news would be having to go back to Town Meeting and ask for more money, I guess, and, because this, again, we're talking about fire protection. Marlene, do you have anything to add on to that?
Other than just to say that the architects are going to go back and look at the drawings again and get back to us about, you know, whether there's something that could be changed.
So, I just want to make sure I'm clear. So, the whole renovation, you know, the second phase of Town Hall is to be ADA compliant, which we're supposed to attempt or at least be underway by September, right? So, certain items aren't going to be able to be removed or cut, and so it would have to be the add-ons, I would imagine, that we're going to look at as far as if, in fact, we decide to reduce the amount versus coming back to the Town and asking for more money.
Right. If we decide to reduce the amount, also, they're going to be going back to the Architectural Board and looking for an extension, and I believe we have to get an extension for some money from CPA because I think there was a deadline for CPA money for September.
Right, that was September 1st. CPA's deadline is September 1st for use of their funds.
So, unfortunately, being over $371,000 was a shock. Before this, we had plans that they were going to start early. COA was going to move out. COA had a place over at the church, and all this, so right now, unfortunately, it's a quagmire, I guess, so.
Do we, do we know when the rebids or the bidding's going out again?
So, they're looking at rebidding in October.
In October?
In October, by October. So, then that means they would be looking at construction the end of December if the ground is not frozen. Otherwise, it will be delayed.
So.
We would also, if the scope of work is, if the Town chooses to change its scope of work, we'd have to go back to Town Meeting and revoke that.
So, I mean, when we, when they come back, I think we need to meet with everybody and say, "Do you really, really need this?" And if so, we'll have to go to Town Meeting, and if, if we don't make changes, so. So, everything's sort of like being checked now, so.
Yeah, I just, my personal opinion, I just think that the Architectural Board is really the concern for me, you know, given that we've already been extended through September of 2018, and now, you know, I mean, I get it. I understand why. It's just, you know, I don't want them to run out of patience with us.
Well, see what he says, because he was going to go back and talk to them, and so we'll, we'll find out how out of patience they are with us, I guess.
We expressed concern when we met with the architect about that.
Okay. All right. Thanks for the update.
The good news is the stairs are done.
Good news, no, almost. Yeah, the stairs will be done.
So, in the meantime, the COA Chair and Director met with representatives from the Church Council, and the Church has made a request, several requests.
I guess we can move right on to Topic 2 now because that's, that's why I brought up Topic 6. So, yeah, let's move right into Topic 2 about the Church and you guys.
And that would be, yes, the meeting was about, you know, the Council on Aging, using some space at Our Lady of the Grace Church Monday through Friday. So, I don't know, Carrie, if you'd like to add anything?
So, Cindy and I were there. Jane was present with Father Coonan, the Diocese lawyer, another gentleman that's part of their maintenance, and then Tom Wickles, who is part of their financial team at Our Lady of Grace. And it sounds, it seems like to me, and correct me Cindy if I'm wrong, but they're completely on board with us using their space. We're going to use their kitchen downstairs, their space on the stage mainly for lunch every, the Monday through Friday, and their two bathrooms. The downstairs hall area will be used one day, well, for exercise and for our bingo, which is a day a week. But what we couldn't answer for them is, is that they're looking to find out what the Town is going to pay for us to use the space. They came up with some items that, dollar amounts, which Cindy has written down, and you guys can discuss those, but.
They have those numbers.
Okay, so you guys have those numbers. I'm going to say my personal concern as a Board Member but also as a taxpayer, I think that that $1,600 that they're looking for to do some updating that they need to do to bring their building to code is not the Town's responsibility. I might be shooting myself in the foot right now saying that, but I just don't think that that's a cost that we should be taking on for us to use the facility. I'm, the building is used daily, or every weekend by them, so I'm sure that those same things have to be updated in general. They discussed about the upping of, the increase of electricity and heat use, and what they were, my understanding was is that they want us to pay the difference of what their overage is. To me, I think that's clearly respectable and legit. And then the cleaning sources, we, I mean, as Jane pointed out, and she's absolutely correct, the place will be cleaner than it is currently probably after Cookie and Jane are done every day cleaning it after we've used it. But they, I talked to Marlene about this, is that if we already have somebody, whoever the cleaning person is, they would normally be cleaning downstairs for the COA as part of the project here anyways. So, even if it's two days a week that they go over there and re-clean the space and clean the two bathrooms, I think that's a reasonable request, that making sure that the church space is actually kept up to date and clean. But with that said, now that the renovation's being pushed off possibly six months at this point, I, along with Jane, and I probably am speaking for the rest of the Board members, but I have not spoken to them, I don't think we need to, we shouldn't put this on the back burner. I think we need to make a decision that the Town is either going to say, "Yes, we're going to afford X amount of dollars to pay the church for us to use the space for 10 months or a year." Personally, I think we should just look at it for a year, and if it's less than that, great, but if not, then we already have the year taken care of. But I don't want to, I, and I know the members are going to say the same thing, we don't want to wait till October when bids come back in or even after that to say, "Well, now we have to discuss if we are or not using the church." We've done a lot of work of looking at different places and brought this forward, and this is the best option for us to keep our programs running, because the answer comes to be is is that if we don't do this, the COA is, the programs are going to be shut down for 10 months to a year.
I totally agree with what you're saying as far as myself, but my only question now is, is that you brought up is this $1,600. So, the question I have is when you talked, when you guys met and talked with setting out these arrangements, was it set up that you could come back and sort of revisit it? Or was this like, this is all?
No, to me, it wasn't like it was set in stone, and I don't, you had said that you guys needed to discuss it as a whole, and you guys would go back and forth. Jane and I made it abundantly clear that we, as the Board of Directors, and Jane as the Director have, we have no communication when it comes to the finance part of all of this. That is clearly you guys and the finance team, and we didn't want to speak out of turn, and Cindy made it clear that she needed to discuss it with you guys, so it was, they understand that this had to come back to here. You guys need to discuss it, figure out if you do or don't have the money to do it, and what you are and are not willing to be paying for. And again, like that day, when I, when he first talked about the $1,600, I was like, "Ah, yeah, I guess," and then I thought about it more, and I'm just like, "Well, that makes no sense to me that us coming there is causing this problem." So, I just think it's something that worth looking into just to not be spending more money than we need to, but.
Are you suggesting that you guys get back with them again and?
No, I'm suggesting that you guys, as the Selectmen, meet with them because you guys are the financial people. That's not coming from the COA at all because we have no say. We can't tell them yes or no or whatever. So, we can have a meeting that you, as the Board, give direction to Cindy, and we can re-meet like we did the other day because Cindy's our liaison. I don't care about that. That's fine, and I don't think they would care about that. But obviously, that has to come with whatever you guys as a whole have decided to move forward with as suggestions. I mean, it's probably going to take more time to make a final decision.
I mean, right now, I sort of agree with the monthly, you know, the heat and electricity. So, our, I guess, depending on how my other colleagues feel, you're saying we could say, "Okay, Cindy, now go back and try to negotiate." We'll say the $500 is fine per month, but the $1,600, something like that, is that what we're looking for? What are we looking for, Cindy?
When, when they did bring up, when the financial end of it came up, Mr. Wickles spoke, he said, when he mentioned the $1,600, he goes, "We know we need to do that anyway."
Right.
So, I think that he left room for negotiating there.
Right.
I think that was intentional on his part. All right, that's how I took it. I can't speak for him. And the 500, I don't know how we would handle that if it happened, because it's a church. I don't know if it'd have to be like in the form of a donation as opposed to a rent. I don't know how that works. So, that's something else we have to figure out.
And they also asked about the?
The liability end of it we've, we've turned up. That was all taken care of.
The liability part was taken care of, and, and, so however you guys decide of how payment can happen or not or whatever, I just don't, I don't personally want to wait. I think we need to finish these negotiations, if you want to call it, to finalize this whole thing and figure out, because if we can't do it, if the Town can't afford to pay it, then the COA Director and our Board of Directors needs to just be told that, and it is what it is. With that also said, everybody needs to realize that that's going to shut down our senior programs for 10 months, and that's a big thing, a pill to swallow, because so many people benefit from what we have. It will only shut down our programs. It won't shut down the van driving, taking you to the appointments. It won't shut down Jane. It just shuts down our exercise program, our lunch programs, and some of the extras that we have.
I just want to be clear because you didn't throw out any dates, and I agree with you. So, if we're going to move forward with the agreement with the Diocese and with the Church, you want us to still go ahead with that, but basically, basically, we're leaving the start date blank.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to spell that out for everybody.
And they, because like we told them the other day, we don't know when the start date's going to be. Like, we kind of thought it was August 1st, but clearly that's changed.
Right.
So, I mean, in all honesty, four months from now when this is all done, it may not even be December. It could be, we have to wait till Town Floor. So, I'm appreciative, very appreciative of the fact that Father Coonan and the, like the Diocese and Father Coonan and their Parish Council and all that stuff have agreed to this because it's a huge thing for us to not have to shut down our programs.
I think it's great.
And, you know, it's kind of this back and forth thing, you know? So, I'm grateful for that, but I don't want to delay it.
Would it make more sense if Cindy went back, found out about that $1,600, and then come back to the next meeting, and then we'll have solid information?
Yeah. If you guys agree about the rest of the numbers, I mean.
Negotiating a contract.
Right.
That's.
And making sure that we have the money to do that. That's all.
Oh, I mean, this now gives us time to look at where we're going to get the money.
Right.
If the Board's in agreement, Cindy and I could coordinate and make an appointment with Father Coonan and Tom Wickles, and Cindy and I could sit down with the two of them and then report back to the Board.
It's fine with me. Thank you.
I don't have a problem with that, do you?
No, not at all. That's a good idea.
Do you need that in a motion, or do you?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion that you guys sit down with Father Coonan and finalize this, about the $1,600 and all that stuff, so.
Second.
Okay, I had a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All opposed, so be it. Motion carries.
And I'd just like to add one thing, just in support of the programs, that they would lose if we don't find a spot or this doesn't work out. There was just, I don't know if you saw it, that the survey, that all the clients that take the classes filled out and what it means to them, the paperwork coming back, and it's amazing what it means to some of the elderly.
I think we understand it. I think the only issue is the $1,600, so that's what we're looking for more information on, basically. That's all.
Right. Yeah, for now, as long as we can.
That and the source of revenue, where the money's coming from. You should probably look at it about $10,000 in the first 12 months.
Right. It's about, it's about 10 grand is what you should be looking at dollar-wise, is what we figured out ourselves, so. That's, I mean, that's a chunk of change when we know where our finances are, so. And we understand that, so don't think that we don't get that, but up until like three or four weeks ago, there's never been a conversation about money, and that's the, that's kind of the downfall of all of this, is that here we are, we did all the paperwork with the Diocese and the lawyers and all this stuff, and we thought we were moving forward and getting this, you know, done, and then all of a sudden, it's like, "Oh, hey, here's the financial conversation." And it was just too bad that that day when we met, we couldn't discuss it because Jane and I can't, and Cindy was by herself, so it's not like you guys hadn't posted a meeting, so there was no way for you to discuss it, and obviously that.
I've communicated with the Financial Director for a while now.
And you could said that.
For the Diocese, and he never said anything to me. It was, you know, really about that.
Absolutely. So, it's kind of like a, it's not like we've, any of us have dropped anything. It was kind of all of a sudden dropped in our lap, so.
Understood.
All right. Thanks.
Well, thank you for all your work on this.
Thanks, Carrie.
We've tried.
Hopefully. We get some more resolution on it. Okay, I'm going to move to Topic number 3, Planning Board Vacancy.
Right.
Let's see.
So, there is a vacancy on the Planning Board that Ron Sassy, and the Planning Board has expressed interest in posting the position. The Board of Selectmen must vote to have that position posted, and after 10 days, the Planning Board and Board of Selectmen will vote jointly to appoint someone, or if someone expresses interest in that, and that would be until the annual election.
I'll make a motion to point in accordance with Chapter 41, Section 11, have the Planning Board do the vacancy.
Second.
I will submit a vacancy notice to the Town Clerk based on the Board of Selectmen's direction to do that.
All right.
Second.
Motion made. Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So be it.
Quick question on that one. Marlene, if I could, when is that term off? How will that actually work? You said till the next annual election.
Right, that was.
That person?
I, off the top of my head, I don't know what year he was in, what year of the term.
So, when you appoint with the Planning Board, it would be until that term expires or until May?
My understanding is until the annual election. So, what, and then whatever the term, if there's a balance to the term left that person elected, say it's two years, they would serve out the two years.
Okay, we're going to move on to Topic 4, Accounting Services. Last meeting, everybody was provided information on what it would cost to outsource, and also the way I understand this process, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is first, the Board would have to be unanimous in determining whether we wanted to outsource accounting, and then if the Board was unanimous, the next process would be meeting with a Town Accountant to determine how to deal with the contract. That's my understanding of this process, and if I'm wrong, please correct me. So, right now, the way it's going, the way I'd like to see this is I'll give my two cents. My colleagues will say their two cents, and we'll have a discussion on it. Presently, the way I see it, our present accountant with, with health insurance and retirement and all that and benefits is presently around $72,909.16. And also, in the budget line for accounting services is 10 grand, so there, and that 10 grand is for training or assistance or help or whatever else is needed. So, that right there is 82 grand, almost 83 grand. So, I guess there's been some discussion, I mean, going back to the history of all this, is the accountant originally was hired knowing that the accountant was not a municipal accountant, what I understand, and hopefully that the accountant would come up to speed, and this is his third year, and, and there's been other factors besides visas with the Treasure Collector's Office and everything else, so. But I don't want to get into that part. I just want to look at it from a financial perspective for the Town of Hatfield, whether it's to the Town's benefit to outsource this position, not that I, I'm in agreement with outsourcing a lot of positions in this Town, just in this position, so. Right now, it has, we're not being able to meet Schedule A without assistance, where we still have to pump money into this accounting, so I'm going to open up whoever wants to go next.
I'd just like to say that I did receive a quote for outsourcing the accounting services for $61,000, so when you were talking about what we're currently paying.
Yes, and that quote, according to that quote for $61,000, it says, "Completion of all the work under the statute for Town Accountant. On-site, 10 hours per month inclusive of finance management meeting, weekly hour meeting with management, monthly written reports to Board and Finance Committee, conference call check-ins with Board at least once per quarter, 50% remote participation in all financial com budget meetings via conference call, turn keys, services for positions." But this does not include, this bid price does not include the remainder of 2017 or remediating 2018.
Right, that's a separate services agreement.
So, yes. So, right now, on paper, to me, it's a lot cheaper on that, on this position to outsource, but does it benefit the Town? I guess that's the question. Is this a good thing for the Town by outsourcing or, or not? I let my colleagues.
Question.
Not yet. I was going to let my colleagues have their say, then we'll go to questions, unless they don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions. I have a comment.
Okay.
I think that as we look to the future of the Town finances, while, while the salary we pay somebody or the monies we pay to an accounting firm are important, what you want to get is you want to get the best bang for your buck, right? So, if we're going to outsource it, we'd be outsourcing it to a professional financial company who's got the background and the people working there that have the financial, municipal financial background in order to get things done. So, I know we're still talking numbers, and there's more to come about that, but even if it were to be a little bit more, to know that we're getting a firm that has the background and everything, you know, you get what you pay for. So, I'm a big advocate of outsourcing the accounting services going forward.
Cindy, comments?
First, a question. You said the first vote is, is correct, would be to decide whether to outsource, the second would be to renegotiate a buyout of a contract?
No.
No, I didn't say anything about voting.
No, that's what Ed asked, he was asking you.
I said, I said, the way I see the process is the first part would be if the Board would be in agreement.
Whether the Board supports outsourcing.
Supporting outsourcing, and if the Board is totally in agreement, then the second part would be sitting down with the accountant and discussing how to.
Process, discussing the process.
Is that a proper way to say it?
Is that the proper way to do it, is what I'm asking? Is that, is that the right order you're asking? That's what I was asking. Does anyone know?
This is new. This is what we, we've discussed this, and, I mean, how can you, unless you determine what you're going to do, well, you got to have one step before the other step.
Right, that's why I thought that you'd, you know, I'm looking at the contract that we have.
Well, that'd be another, that'd be another issue of sitting down, and that would be something all three of us would have to agree on. I mean, there's, we all three have to agree first on whether we not want to outsource, and then all three of us would have to agree on how we wanted to deal with the contract.
Well, the contract does give a remedy for how to do it. It's right in the contract.
We're not that at point yet.
Okay, so that is the second step legally?
That'd be the second step.
And that's legal, a legal opinion? Okay. I guess my only concern, my only concern is that, well, I guess there's two, whether the Town's fulfilled the obligation, you know, that they agreed to. And, but the second one, the one, the one I really have an issue with is, can you say that that quote that you got was that Bay State Municipal also?
Yes.
Okay. They were the ones that asked to keep an accountant in place, and I felt that. They were the ones that asked to keep an accountant in place, and I felt that we hired them because they are the professionals, because that is above our skill level. And they said that they like to see an accountant in each town, that they like to see a physical presence there, and that's how they like to, and he had said that they expected the accountant to be there with our contract with them. So that, that's my concern, if they're the experts and they're telling us they want a physical presence, they want an accountant here, we've hired them for their expertise because we're not the experts, so do we override what they've requested?
But do we, do we spend $20,000 more to abide by their request when they can do the job for $20,000 less? I mean.
Well, yeah, like you said, are we gonna outsource everybody, though? There is a value to having someone in-house, but.
I'll open it up for, you wanted to make a comment, right?
My other question was just, do you think having someone, so I understand it's $20,000 less based on getting the work done, which is fine, but do you anticipate that you might actually need a person more than 10 hours a month? So are you gonna have to supplement that $60,000 with somebody else? I'm not saying accountant, but somebody who does something more than 10 hours a month? I don't know the answer to that question, but it just, it's not a lot of time.
And would I assume, because this happens in Hadley, that they're only available 10 hours a month in office, but I assume that they're available via telephone, via email, so if a department such as a DPW had a request, then he doesn't have to wait for the 10 hours a month to come in? I'm assuming he can email Bay State and say, "I wanna know X, Y, and Z about snow and not," whatever, whatever the question. Is that, is that true?
I think it might be, because if you go to the Hadley website, you see, under Town Accountant, you'll see Bay State just enlisted, and then on that website, you'll see all the, all the numbers, the financial pages, everything's there. It's sort of nice, you get up-to-date information on a monthly basis.
Yeah.
We could also consider hiring an accountant down the road after we get our mess sorted out, to revisit this issue and say, it would be nice to have someone in-house and seek to hire an accountant at that time.
An accountant or an assistant accountant?
Or, yeah.
As what, isn't that what the auditor suggested, that, you know, having an assistant, is that the proper term, an assistant accountant?
I mean, everybody's been saying for the last few months, we trying to get our financial house in order.
Exactly.
In order to get our financial house in order, we have to have professional people to get it done. And I mean, Tony Rizzelli's made his comments, and along with, with Justin and stuff, so. I mean, everybody's put a lot of effort and time into get the financial house in order, so is this the last gear that needs to be fixed for the engine to run, or do we keep it running the way it's running?
Yeah, quite possibly, could be. Did we ever get an answer from Justin as to if there was something somehow that we could speed up the process of?
Yes, and they, they could speed up the process, it would mean more people from his office, and there would be, you know, a cost, a fee for that as well.
Oh, did he break it down any more specifically?
The other question he did have, which I thought was an excellent question, is if DOR is going to have the same condition that they placed on us for getting fiscal year 17 closed up, do we need to have an audit completed and a draft copy of that report before we can even have free cash certified?
Justin was asking you of that.
Justin had asked me that it's possible DOR could have that same restriction. I emailed Mary Jane Handy, I have not heard from her.
And, and.
But I'm, sorry, go ahead.
No, getting back to you, Cindy, as far as the training aspect, you're saying, did we fulfill it? I mean, when I first came on board, DOR offered a lot of help and assistance, and our accountant would not call them and contact them or ask them questions, and they, he was told, "Call DOR." "No, I'm not gonna call," he wouldn't call them, I mean, so, I mean, is it our fault? It's sort of like, can you lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink, you know what I'm saying, sort of, so. I mean, I don't, I don't say, I think we did provide ability to train. I mean, the job description said certification within two years, and this is the third year, so, I mean, that's just.
Sean, when you asked about the phone calls, were you asking if that's gonna be more money in addition to, is that what you're meant, like, you can call them?
I was just asking, outside of getting the actual accounting work done and getting caught up, which I understand is what the quote is for, is getting caught up and getting the, the actual accounting, that, it's not. It's just getting the accounting work done, but we already have money aside for the other piece, theoretically.
Yeah, just the, whatever the accountant has.
So I'm only wondering, do you, and this is not an argument for, against doing it, really, it's just a question about, do you need a presence, a physical presence here? I'm not sure, you know, day to day, every single thing that, that the accountant does. So, like, is 10 hours a month an adequate physical presence, I guess is the question, or do you need to supplement that with, I'm not saying an accountant, a municipal accountant, but somebody who's like Darrell said, like an assistant, or.
A clerk.
Clerk, or somebody who, who does like, the function, the task processing stuff, you know, not the high-level accounting.
And I believe Hadley has an accounting clerk.
Yeah, like, that's what I'm wondering.
Bay State's picking up AP, right, as a?
Yes. This week.
This week, Bay State's picking up AP, this week.
Question, it's okay. I'm actually wondering about whether we're really comparing apples to apples in looking at the 83 grand versus the 61 grand. I mean, I guess I'm thinking about the position description for the town accountant and the deliverables that are expected of that position on a routine, annual basis, just doing the accounting, assuming that we were caught up doing the town's accounting, you know, on an ongoing basis. And I, you know, my experience has always been, whatever you outsource, and if you're looking at the same number of hours, if you will, the same level of investment in work that was being done inside is now gonna be done outside, that usually the outside cost is a lot more than if you are basically insourcing that work. So I guess I feel a little uncomfortable with, and is this what we're really doing, that we're replacing a 40-hour-a-week, or whatever, 35-hour-a-week position, which each month is what, 100 and, I don't know, 140 hours a month, with a 10-hour per week outsourcing?
That's just physically here.
That's, that's what's. Okay, so, so.
No, no, onsite, onsite 10 hours.
Okay, so there's physically here onsite, but they're saying that, yes, they will, they are basically gonna be able to carry out any and all of the duties that the town accountant's position description outlays at this point, on a timely basis for the town of Hadfield, for $20,000 a year.
Correct. They presently are doing that in Hadley, right? I mean, they're the account for Hadley.
And to me, it's less about the money, the 83, it's more about, we need to get the job done, we need to get 18 in the book, we need to get 19 started and done correctly, I think we've made steps. And to me, the question is, are we better off outsourcing and getting 18 taken care of and moving forward from there? I mean, we can, you, the town, we can revisit this in a year and decide, maybe we do need a clerk, maybe we need something else, but to me, the immediate need is what is going to get 18 in the books, and, and the audit done, and Schedule A put in, and free cash certified, and our tax rate as quickly and as accurate as possible. Absolutely.
And then look to save money, like Mike's suggesting, down the road, and see where we can pull away from that outsource, that in-house, save money, feel better.
The other piece of that is you probably are far more likely to attract a qualified person who would take the job.
Right.
If you're not in a giant mess, you know, like, seriously, does somebody wanna step in and, and like, be responsible for fixing this?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, as their first assignment, that kind of feels like it might be a setup for, you know.
Right. Some firms didn't even call us back. Right? They shall be not named, but.
So, just curious, if we were to decide to do this and spend this money with Bay State, how much would we be dedicating to Bay State in fiscal '19, money-wise? Because they're also, they also have a contract to catch up with 18.
Right, so we appropriated $60,000 for fiscal year '19 for them to reconcile 18 and assist with the transition to '19. That's, yeah, that's $60,000. The $61,000 is just strictly accounting services.
And does that include the conversion to a new charter of accounts?
That's part of the, that's what he's been doing, he started that in the previous fiscal year, and he'll continue, they're taking on the AP process as well, so that's built into the $60,000.
So $121,000 will pay approximately to Bay State this year to, for two years' worth of work.
Right.
And to speed it up, you said to try to get it done sooner, that'll be another cost?
The last time we talked, we said December 1st, by December 1st. My conversation with Justin, when he raised the question about whether DOR may require us to have an audit done, he raised that question because it's a very busy time for the auditors in the fall, and perhaps we may not be able to, to get everything wrapped up by December 1st, if that is a condition of DOR.
But if we got it wrapped up by, at least if we got it wrapped up by December 1st, and we had the audit January 1st, I mean.
So if.
We're still, we're still, huh?
No tax rate, yeah.
We have done a tax rate without an audit in the past, how is that happening?
Well, because we weren't on the list of the DOR like we are now. So that's something we would need to talk, if that is the condition, we need to talk to the auditor.
We don't have any control over that, really.
It's still a possibility that we could speed it up for a fee.
Yeah.
But, but the thing is, Bay State could have our books ready and our schedule in by December 1st. If the auditors are busy and can't do an audit, that's not their fault, but they are in control of completing, or closing our books by December 1st, and that ought to be the target date for them.
Yeah.
Keep the auditors surprised, and hopefully they can turn the audit around in a month or whatever.
That's the deal.
See what the DOR says.
Right now, right? December 1st happening.
That's what we, that's what we talked about here.
Well, and the question is, are we gonna be better off outsourcing, are we better off outsourcing the whole thing? Do we have a better chance of getting done by December 1st if we outsource the whole thing? Or staying the course that we have now, where we're still gonna pay about the same amount?
Well, good thing about it, Darrell, you would have one, not necessarily a person, but one entity to hold accountable and responsible for all of what you're asking for.
Absolutely, yep.
And no one can really blame anybody else, the only persons that you would have to hold accountable would be Bay State.
Right, well, and I'm in defense of them, they, they, 19, that is absolutely for sure, 18, they're trying to find some, you know what I mean? They're, they're trying to deal with what has been done in the past year, so that'll be more of a challenge for them. Although I hear the treasurer's office, you've reconciled five months, four months?
We'll essentially be done reconciling the treasurer's office by the end of July.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
And, and Bay State is already working on 18, on the account, so he's asking Derek for files.
That's great, that's, that's really wonderful.
Yeah, it's awesome.
So that's my opinion.
Somebody more comments from my colleagues, or any discussions?
Yeah, question, so it's 60, 61 to accelerate that, or is that another fee?
$61,000 is just to take on the accounting services.
So to speed it up for December, there'd be, there'd be more.
Oh, if you're, for December, you're talking about December, that's to reconcile, just your 18 reconciled.
Right.
That's, that's separate from the accounting services.
Yeah, it sounds like we need to know what that fee is, and then the answer from the DOR as to whether there's gonna be an audit necessary.
Right, there would be an additional cost.
I would venture a guess that Derek doesn't, excuse me, Justin wouldn't know that number yet, I would think he's gotta delve into some of these numbers and see how the books.
And he said he would take over that.
Might, might take him a little while to figure out how much extra time.
The other element here is I wouldn't get too excited about the $20,000 difference, only because there's likely to be some sort of a transition period with Derek and BMA overlapping as they're, he's handing off things and/or a settlement.
Yep.
Cost, so.
No question.
We'll look at that as fun money at this point. Although the COA could use it.
Well, it's been brought up for discussion, so again, we'd all, three of us would have to agree if we want to outsource, that'd be step one. Step two would be, if we all agree, then we all would have to agree with the terms of how to discontinue the contract.
I'll make a motion that we outsource the accounting services.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I was just gonna say, it is in the contract how to handle that already.
What's that?
It is in the contract with the accountant how to handle that.
Well, that's another discussion.
Correct.
Right, for your second step, you said how to figure out, but it does make.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, are you?
Motion made.
Motion made, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, so be it, motion carries. Now, the next step, Marlene, is to have a meeting with the accountant, so.
So the early, we need to give the accountant 48 hours' notice, if the, earliest the board could meet, this week would be Friday, I could post that meeting tomorrow.
I'm available, are you available?
I'll make myself available.
Okay.
Today is Tuesday, right?
Yep.
Yes, it has to be posted tomorrow, yeah. Friday, so it's gonna have to be posted tomorrow.
After doctor in the morning on Fridays.
Okay. Oh, I lied, I lied. Can it be in the morning? I'm leaving a little mini-vacation Friday afternoon, I'm sorry.
So I have to take care of it?
But I do have the day off, so anytime Friday is good.
I have a doctor's appointment in the morning, but I'll give you a time.
Seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, yeah.
Nine, 10, that's fine.
Cindy has an appointment.
I have a doctor's appointment in the morning, I'll, I'll just tell you what time.
So that's the 12th, okay.
13.
Oh, you're right, 13.
Lucky Friday to 13.
Yeah, that's at 9 o'clock, so, let's say after 10:30.
Okay.
Is that all right? I should be back by then.
Okay.
Okay. Yep, 11 o'clock, give you a little extra time.
I'll get 11 o'clock, okay.
Perfect, okay, 11 o'clock Friday.
Okay.
Okay, topic number five would be appointments.
You want to do topic number seven, since the finance committee's here, and then go back to five.
That's right, okay, thanks, I stand corrected.
No.
Financial management update, so.
Oh, did you wanna take up topic five?
That's not the one I meant, I meant six, my apologies.
Topic five, do you wanna take up topic five?
Yeah, topic five, I'll go back to topic five, stand corrected again.
Well, what agenda are you looking at?
We moved stick.
Yeah, we wanna talk about vote to transfer available funds with the finance committee.
Oh, I have topic five appointments for planning board reps to PVPC and community preservation, so you should have a revised agenda.
This is town hall renovation update, that's the one that was handed out to the public.
There's, there's a row of numbers on the left-hand side, and then indented is another row of numbers, and there's.
Oh, I'm talking about topic five, not number five, I'm talking about topic five. Under number four, posted business, topic five.
Okay.
Appointments.
Can we?
This has been posted.
Can't we, but I'm looking, I guess, to go out of order then to meet with the finance committee.
Oh, I, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you wanted to go out of order.
Which is number six, meet with the finance committee, according to.
Oh, okay.
To talk about the transfers.
Okay.
So, you guys okay with that?
Order will be the finance committee then. Topic seven. Topic. Topic seven is financial management update, and.
Six.
In six. Oh, yeah, six, six, my mistake, okay.
There's a lot of sixes and sevens on here.
Easily, I guess, okay. Okay, we're going to meet with the finance committee now, and we're going to talk about fiscal eighteen-year end transfers.
Transfer list?
Daryl? I have the transfer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and we as the finance committee officially open our, our portion of our meeting. So we're, I guess, officially open. There's three of us, and we're, that's quorum.
Just to let the finance committee know, there's a number of finance reserve transactions. Those have to be voted by the finance committee. Those are separate from the vote that the board, second, and the finance committee will take up to transfer.
Other than the one that we have.
They're clipped together. There's several finance committee transfers. They're all clipped together.
Oh, yeah.
I've never heard of them.
They're all different.
Marlene, you have to come tonight and get.
Right, that's just the finance committee reserve fund, that's for the board and the finance committee, okay. Daryl, is there an extra copy of the motions?
You got this? I think we got two extra copies.
Do you have?
Let's see, I do have this. I have that, I'm good.
I'd like to see you guys. You guys should have a copy of the motions. I have a copy of the motions. Okay. So how do we end up with so much money?
You know, I have the same question.
Yeah, we double check the numbers and, you know, some of the, the, shortfalls are small, they're not huge, and then there is.
But we have, like, I was saying.
Computer maintenance budget, though, is significant.
I was saying to Sean, and I, we, the two of us, we've been doing this a long time. I don't ever remember taking care of snow and ice. At this, this time of year, and I actually, my question to Marlene this morning is, why would we do that because we're going to, because we should have made provisions in the nineteen budget to take care of it in eighteen, and it should come off our, what is it?
Well, we added it to the, we put it on the recap in the past, but that affects the tax rate.
The cherish you do.
Right.
Yeah, but in the budget, we, we, we knew what that figure was going to be, right?
We took it off the top.
Well, we always put an estimate in there.
No, we took it off the top. We knew exactly what fills this eighty-six, what is it, eighty-six thousand dollars, eighty-five thousand dollars?
Right, we did, we did. We put it into nineteen, and we plugged the actual eighty-six thousand for eighteen.
So that should take care of that.
And I forwarded the email from Justin Cole, and he applauded the town for taking care of it, if we have the money to do it, as opposed to taking care of it at a later time.
So my question is, if we don't take care of it and we wait, this money will not have to be spent, assuming we get free cash, it will go to free cash. If we take care of it now, that money and what happens to that money which we kind of set aside in nineteen?
I'm looking at Sean because I think there was, there was a reason why it was more beneficial to do it on the recap sheet.
Yeah, because it's deferred, and there's no interest, and there's no, and it's a real number.
Right.
I don't remember what that rationale was.
That is an option. You can take care of it on the recap sheet.
Right, but there was some reason that it was more advantageous to the town to do it on the recap as opposed to doing it like this, but I honestly can't remember.
May I? So I think the question that Daryl's asking, and I have the same thing, is we've already accounted for it, right, in the twenty nineteen budget? So by doing, if we were to transfer money to take care of it now, what, what's happening to that?
That's for the next year, though.
That would become twenty twenty free cash.
Right, it would be, it would be a full year, or we could have the free cash now.
That's the advantage. You could get it in nineteen rather than in twenty.
Right.
We might need it in nineteen. I don't know.
Yeah. Right. Yeah.
If you need it in nineteen, it should be, it would be in free cash.
Right, if you don't use it, it'll still go in twenty.
Right, right.
So you're, you know, you're, it's like, it's like, it's like a borrowing from yourself at no interest cost.
Right.
State allows you to do that because you just don't know what that overage is going to be here.
Just so long as we're sure we did all the right things in the nineteen budget, and I thought we did, I thought we checked and double-checked those numbers to make sure that we had eighty-six thousand dollars that we can put on the recap.
Right, because, because originally the number was a lot more than that until we got the actual.
Right, we thought it was a hundred and five, and then it was less.
Then we dropped it down a little, right.
And it was probably one of the first years we used a more realistic number to sort of make everybody happy, because, you know.
That's true.
So, right, so.
Regardless of what, what you budget for, if you, if you overexpend that budget, which is what this deals with, you can take that over expenditure and put it on the recap sheet the following year. That's what the state allows you to do, that you don't have to come up with the money.
Don't have to come up with the money right now.
Right, exactly. So that's, that's what we're dealing with, is the excess over the budget.
And we may, and it gives, it gives us a little bit more potential free cash for this year, because we may need it, you know, we always need it, but whatever.
So we don't have many opportunities to not have to pay something when it's due. You know, in snow and ice, as we've had the conversation every time we go through the budget, is one of those things that allow you to pay the real cost of what you spent previously the following year.
Right.
So why, you know.
The real cost.
The real cost of what you overexpended.
And if we were, and if we were, you know, in a situation where we had a good, solid understanding of everything that was happening in eighteen, right, you could make an argument like, hey, let's take care of it now, and then, but we're not, we don't, not in that situation, you know, like, so things could happen.
Right.
What is that one, just because?
What?
Eighty-six thousand.
Eighty-six thousand.
That's a decent, that's a good amount of money.
Yeah. Right. So, yeah, so I would, I don't know how we do this, but I would say that my personal opinion is we do not take care of this, excuse me, the snow and ice. We wait and do that on the recap.
I would agree with that. So does the finance committee, Marlene, did you say they have to make approvals or transfers first before then the six of us actually vote to move?
Well, we just have to separately do the.
The finance reserve, that's separate.
The finance reserves have to be voted on separately by us, because we have to sign them separately anyway.
Gotcha, okay, all right.
So we could actually go first, and then you guys could follow up with it.
Yeah, we could still do the whole thing as a thing, but then we have to.
So the motion you have before you to take up those shortfalls, you would just exclude the last, the snow and ice at the bottom?
Yeah, right.
I think that to Daryl's question, I mean, I now have department heads here, but this is, you know, you can see where the money came from. I mean, you know, fire department salaries.
Yeah.
Maybe there was no.
Police department.
Fires to, you know, like, I mean, those things are pretty variable, police and fires salaries can be, can be variable depending on, you know, do you have, do you have police? I mean, do you have, were they fully staffed all year? I don't know the answer to that, but maybe not. Maybe they didn't spend it, you know, people didn't take shifts.
We commend the police and the fire department for being able to be, you know, turn money back.
Yeah.
So all these, all these, all these, all these bills, if you will, overages have already been paid for. It's just that what you're voting is to, is on the budget item.
They've already been spent, for sure.
They've already been spent, and what you're just doing is kind of budget, to increase the budget item.
To pay for it.
For that to pay for it, to account for it, right?
Yeah, yeah, they mainly probably haven't, some of them probably haven't.
Even the school ice has been paid for.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Guys have been paid.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So do we, do we want to take this line by line, or do you want to do the whole thing at once?
After, we may have to read them line by line.
So I would entertain a motion to transfer a dollar from the assessor's salaries, three oh eight point, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was thinking, we might be able to do it all as one motion.
Yes.
But just read them one at a time, you know what I mean?
Okay.
So like, I'll make a motion to transfer the sum of one dollar from the assessor's salaries, three oh eight twenty-eight from the assessor's expense, for a total of three oh nine twenty-eight to assessor's staff salaries. Two thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty cents from inspectors' expense to inspection service salaries. Two thousand six hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-six cents from facilities maintenance salaries to facilities maintenance expense. Thirty-nine dollars from cemetery expense, and one thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and twelve cents from selectmen's salary, for a total of one thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and twelve cents to cemetery salaries. Six thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-nine cents from legal services to veterans' benefits. Eighty-nine dollars and forty cents from legal services to library expense. Two thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-one cents from town administrator expense to town administrator staff temporary employee wages. One thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-six cents from legal services to historical commission expense. Three hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighteen cents from highway department wages to highway department expense. Three thousand five hundred and twenty-four oh five from transfer station wages to transfer station expense.
That should be it. We're not going to do the rest of it. Right? All the rest of it is the snow and ice. Is that right, Marlene?
That's correct. Yeah, but you have theirs.
But there's, what about this? So, no, that's awesome.
It's all snow and ice, snow and ice expense and snow and ice wages.
Okay, that's it, I'm done with the motion.
So that was the motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Finance committee side. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Key, if I may, I'll make that exact same motion that Sean just read, verbatim.
Second amendment.
Yeah, okay, good.
A motion made, motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, so now we have some transfers that we have to do. So this is amount of three hundred and eighty, eighty-two dollars and fifty-one cents to be transferred to insurance budget. Original appropriation was one hundred and forty thousand dollars, and this is three hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-one cents in deficit.
Do you want a motion?
Yes.
Make the motion, transfer three hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-one cents to the insurance line item.
I second.
It's from finance reserve, right?
From finance reserve. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's, before we start signing all these, let's go through all the motions. And this is three thousand and sixty-two dollars and seventy-four cents to be transferred to facilities maintenance expense.
I move to transfer three thousand sixty-two dollars and seventy-four cents from finance reserve to facilities maintenance expense.
I second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we've got the next, the next one is for the collector's expense.
I move to transfer from the finance reserve fund the amount of one thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-three cents to the collector's expense line item.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Three more. This is technology.
I move to request to transfer from the finance reserve fund the amount of thirteen thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-two cents to be transferred to the technology budget.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. And this is for assessor staff wages.
I move to transfer from the finance reserve fund the amount of one thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars for assessor staff wages.
I second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. And this is the last one that we have, and this is for inspection service wages.
I move to transfer from finance reserve the amount of two thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-eight cents to inspection services wages.
I second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. So that takes care of our portion of that. That should be all the transfers, right? Okay, so as far as other business, we had a pretty busy year last year. I'm assuming that you want to pick, maybe not, maybe next month, that we get an update as to what's going on with our accounting and Bay State and all, the town's financials, so we get an idea where we are, or, or do we want to put that off until the beginning of September?
Like a month, no?
August.
Yeah, stay on top of it.
Okay. So you guys are okay with that? So just schedule us in, and we can see, see where we are, and as usual, we're available if we're needed in between, so, thank you.
Well, a question for you guys, how much money's left over in finance reserve is carries to be? Is there any?
I don't know.
Whatever, it drops to.
Whatever it drops to free cash.
Were there any other line items in the charter of accounts that would end up in a surplus at the end of the year, other than?
Sure.
Well.
Well, you've just.
Well, there are some right here that we didn't.
Yeah.
That you didn't touch.
We didn't touch, yeah, for snow and ice, so.
There's legal services, there's.
Police department, fire.
These are all accounts with surpluses.
Yeah. Which, which in theory will drop to, to free cash.
There's thirty-five thousand, and we've probably spent a few thousand already, right?
We did, we've spent a couple thousand already on, on various things, so.
Then I have just one more question for our, for Marlene with Bay State. Will they be making a specific proposal to, to us to catch up eighteen by December?
They already did. They did that months ago.
Okay.
We, we funded sixty, yes.
Okay, so.
In the nineteen budget.
And that December first quote due date is associated with that, or?
No.
No, that's a.
That's what I'm asking.
That's a date that the selectmen and finance committee talked about. They would like to see eighteen closed out by December first.
Okay, but you had mentioned, that you had mentioned that to Justin, and Justin said, well, we would have to, we would have to evaluate that and perhaps consider adding additional staff. Would that mean an additional cost?
And he said it is due, yes, there would be a cost because they would be having, they'd hire, he'd hire additional people.
So would you be asking them for a proposal?
I did talk about it, he said he would put that together.
Yeah.
So, there, and there is no budget for that?
For the additional, the additional cost, right, I haven't received anything yet.
When we put up that money to stabilization at the last special town meeting, part of the thing, yeah, but, yeah.
Okay, you guys got anything else that you need? Alright, then I guess we'll move, we'll move to topic five. Okay. Okay, I have a letter for topic five, it's, uh, from Lydia Zish, Town Clerk.
I'll give this to Daryl.
The planning board voted on June sixth to have Rick Bencham to be their representative to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and they voted to have Bob Wagner to be the representative to the Community Preservation Committee. Please make these appointments after next meeting. So I'll make a motion to appoint Rick Bencham to, uh, representative of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and Bob Wagner, representative to the-
Thank you.
-Community Preservation Committee.
Thanks, guys. Second.
I have a motion made, second, any discussion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, so be it. Okay. Let's see, we covered all topics, we can go to topic eight. Topic eight, custodial services. Now, originally, originally the board had voted to try to have a custodian for the town hall, but then there was some financial problems with the town budgets, towns were asked, town departments were asked to take a one percent cut, the DPW said they'd take a two percent cut, and then it was, uh, the way the DPW took the two percent cut is they, they took some money away from the custodial, uh, services, so that with the idea that the town COA was going to be moving by July first or August, and now that's all changed, so I guess we're going to have to discuss how to do custodial services, or I believe you want to discuss if, if we want to continue with the vote, and I think, I mean, I mean, we did vote to have a full-time custodian, but with the finances, it's sort of, as far as myself, it's like, how could you ask for a full-time position when departments were being asked for a one percent, two percent cut, and how could you ask the town for a full-time position when, uh, COA was moving out, and, so it sort of, sort of got pushed to the side, I guess, and then Phil took the money and sort of used it to help the town with the two percent cut, so, I, I know you wanted to discuss this, so I'll give you, I'll open it up for you to, for discussion.
Okay, on which points, all of them?
Well, as far as whichever point you want, as far as custodial, I mean, we're going to have to deal with something now because COA's not moving.
Right.
So we, we have to come up, I guess, with, with Phil as our facilities manager to help, I don't know if that's a, going to be a funding issue now, or how's that going to work?
Well, right now, there's ninety-five hundred dollars in that line item to hire a part-time custodian, so that works out with a sixteen dollars and change an hour to like ten hours a week. So that, that's the plan. That's the money that is available.
But will that be able to, with, with COA not moving now until?
I think.
That's going to be a problem?
I don't think so.
You, you feel that?
I feel that with the ten hours a week, that the place will be clean.
So are they going to come here, the ten hours a week, are they going to come every day and clean COA for a couple hours, or is it ever going to be the other day, or how's that going to work with the ten hours?
Well, it will probably be, because I know that during, in the proposal, when we had a cleaning surface, it was as needed, so I mean, I don't think that the floors have to be mopped every day, or the recycling bins have to be mopped, taken away every day, or the trash, it's mostly the bathrooms and the sanitizing of the downstairs, so I think with, with the ten hours a week, that the task can be done.
Well, I know when I first came on board, there was a lot of concern of the cleaning services that the town had, and with the present person that they've had, they've, everybody's been happy to my understanding, she's, uh, been doing a fantastic job, and it's five days a week, so.
But the intent was with the renovations, I mean, that's why the budget was cut, to, because of the renovation, it was supposed to start in July, so with more than half of, of, uh, cleaning, it was only, that was only place to make sense to cut that.
So whatever that doesn't work, and-
And then we'll have to revisit it. I think we should at least give it a trial, and see if it works, if it doesn't work, we're going to have to revisit it, and ask, and go back and ask for funding.
I'm good with that. I mean, you're not going to know unless you try.
I'm going to know.
If you overspend, you go to Finance Reserve this time next year.
What's that?
Yeah, because it's got to be for, so it look, it sound like it's going to be for, at this point, about six months, right, I mean, until December, whenever they're really breaking ground or moving out, whatever, so.
Because we don't know what the, I mean, the bids are going to go out, but then, if they're high, then we have to decide whether we go back to town meeting for money.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't heard any negative things about the current cleaning service either. Having, having said that, though, if we've got something lined up and we know that perhaps, you know, ten hours is enough, then why not try, and then if it's, if it's not enough, given the workload or something, we could-
You're not going to, you're not going to know to try.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so we, and, and then, you know, in a few months, we can revisit it and see if people have been having issues or concerns or anything like that, and then have a discussion as to make a change.
So you're talking hiring somebody for ten hours a week, or you're talking, doing the thing with the school again?
Well, there's a part-time janitor at the school right now, that works four hours a day over there, for the exact amount of money that was originally thought of, so I have already approached him, and he's willing to come over here.
Our present contract ends this month, correct?
Twenty-first, I believe.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-seven or something.
So, at this point, because of the financial situation, I guess we have no choice but to try it and see if it's working or not.
Well, if it doesn't work, we're still in the same financial situation. Right?
Right, then, then what do we do?
But if it does work, then we just save the money, so, I mean, you know, that's the other side of it.
We're in the same situation, but we might be able to-
I mean, obviously, the scope of the work was supposed to change, and didn't, so, you know, I mean, to no one's fault, uh, you know, the bids came in high, so we're not going to renovate, so the scope of the work has changed, so, you know, during all the budget talks, that was, you know, it was going to be for a year, and then go back and revisit it next, you know, in the next budget season, so.
I know the budget was a major concern in trying to get the money, and originally, when, when I had voted for a full-time custodian, I did not realize our financial situation, I, I knew it was bad, but it was a lot worse than what I thought, so, and with departments taking cuts and stuff, it, it just, I said, I, I just couldn't come back and say, yeah, we're going to hire somebody when the money, the departments are saying take cuts, so. But I know, I know when I came on board, cleaning was a big issue in this building, there was a lot of people that expressed their, their unhappiness with where it was going, so, so I guess we're going to-
So how do you determine whether it's working or not?
Talk to the people.
Do you pull?
Feedback.
Do you pull the employees in here, they're the ones that see it firsthand, or?
Don't worry, if it's not working, they'll be the first one knocking on my door.
What's that?
They'll be knocking on the door if it's not working.
I, I don't think the people here are shy, they're, they're not afraid to, uh, bring up their viewpoint if it's, if the bathrooms aren't getting cleaned and stuff, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, getting back to if it's not working, we, I don't know if we can-
Have a conversation.
We have another conversation, right?
There's no money, there's no money.
Right. Try to stretch the rubber band somehow.
It's already on the other side of the room, Ed. Keep stretching.
Well, yeah. Alright.
You have anything to say, anyone else?
Well, there's a couple issues that I, there's the custodian from the school, he works twenty hours, if he works here, ten hours, if he works over forty hours, it has to be time and a half, even though they're two separate positions, that you need to keep in mind. The other thing I think of is, okay, if we use the custodian at the school, then the person that we have currently is doing a good job, so we lose her if you use a custodian at the school, so it's, and would she come back, would the current person come back if we run into issues? Um, you could go either way on-
Well, we'd have to go back, I went out to bid, and, and went through procurement process, so, I mean, that's how she was hired, through the procurement process, and it was through a contract. Unfortunately, we, we probably should have put something in the contract for an extension in the event that we needed her, because, because I hear nothing but great, great things about her cleaning and stuff, and so, I mean-
Well, if you're not negotiating a contract.
I-
If the, if the amount you have budgeted for this, um, and this person goes to full time, there's going to be the benefit cost, there's payroll burden that you're going to be picking up, and has that been included in the?
Not budgeted, though.
So the payroll burden is not budgeted?
Correct.
No, because originally, it was supposed to be a thirty-hour position, correct? When the board voted two to one that they wanted a custodian, it was supposed to be-
It wasn't based on hours? Oh, you mean to hire somebody, oh, to hire, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about for the current-
We're talking benefits, so, it was a thirty-hour position.
Correct.
Right, at sixteen dollars an hour.
That is, that's the board, right, right.
Plus the benefits. That was the original proposal.
Right. So, whether there was renovations or not, to me, that should have been budgeted in, if that's what was voted on, and my experience has been, I've lived in a building, and I've worked in buildings under reconstruction, and it's dirtier than when it's not under construction.
Current person, independent contractor? Yes. Then she doesn't have to be benefited.
Correct, that's, that's, that's coming out of the expense budget.
Yeah.
But they're talking about if you hire a, a custodian as a regular employee, that would be a payroll, it would be, come out of the payroll, out of wages. Well, would there be anyone interested if we put it out to bid for just ten hours a week? Is that a feasible option, or no? Is that something nobody would want?
Well, wouldn't we want one of our own employees to have access to, to more hours? And if that's kind of what their background is, is being a custodian at the school, then, you know-
Well, not if it goes over forty hours, though, that's what she was saying.
Works twenty at the school and ten here, that's thirty.
Thirty.
Is that, is that the rule for benefits, thirty?
Twenty.
Twenty, they're already getting benefits.
He's already eligible over at the school.
Okay.
Right.
Your cost will increase, it's the payroll cost. So no funds are budgeted in nineteen for the custodian?
For independent contractors, no funds. There's ninety-five hundred and fifty dollars for a custodian in the budget, under the salary line.
I still understand that wasn't budgeted, that's what we voted on, I guess that's my stumbling block.
Well, I don't think we ever discussed it with the Finance Committee out of those dozens of meetings that we had, adding a position. I mean, just because we may have voted it, doesn't, yeah, it's a larger-
Right, and they said it would go in, it would be into the budget.
It's the larger picture of when we went through the Finance Committee, line item by line item.
I guess we, let's follow this up at our next meeting, I don't know where the money would come from.
Well, there's ninety-five hundred dol, don't we want to, I, we have to keep the building clo, clean in, in the meantime, so I thought, I mean, to me, it only makes sense to at least give the ten-hour person a shot, and see if the work can be done to the benefit of the town hall employees, and make sure everything's, and if it's not, then the three of us will have to come back and bring Phil in, and we're going to have to find out, and Marlene, where, where can we come up, you know, what do we want to do next? Do we want to up it to twenty hours for somebody? Or do we want to actually go out and hire someone, or do we want to bid, whatever, we're just going to need to come up with the money? Again. Or still, depending how you look at it.
My understanding was when we voted on it, it was going to be in the facilities budget, and when the facilities budget obviously was drawn up-
It is in there, it's just half of them, I mean, because we, we're asked to cut our budget, so that's what we got, you know, it's a two million dollar budget that you have to cut twenty thousand out of, and with the renovations being half of what they, the cleaning at half of what they were supposed to be, that's where we cut the money.
Makes sense.
Any more discussion?
Nope.
Okay, we'll move on to topic nine. Topic nine is local excise of retail sales, sales of marijuana, vote effective date. I'm, I'm not, can you fill me in on this, Marlene?
I'd be glad to. So as you know, there was an article on the annual town meeting warrant, and the legislative body being town meeting, uh, voted to impose the excise retail sales of three percent for marijuana retail. However, the Board of Selectmen is required to, uh, vote a date to impose that, and the town clerk has to certify that vote to the Division of Local Services.
Chairman, so, how did we come up with October first? Do we?
It, again, it has to be a quarterly date, so our next quarter is October first.
That's fine, I just didn't know, so, okay. I'll make a motion to impose an excise on the retail sales of marijuana at the rate of three percent, effective October first, 2018.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Of course, we don't have anything anyway, right now.
Well, that's kind of why I was wondering if somebody was moving in next week, we wanted to make sure we got our three percent.
DOR wants to know what that effective date is.
Okay, I've covered all the topics.
Motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion made in second, and motion adjourned. Thank you.
Aye.